So, give them a round of applause because they did a magnificent job. They were so professional. We would just like to go on through the agenda and Mr. Kennedy, can you take us through that, please? Thank you. Are there any comments that you... Sorry, before I start going forward with the agenda? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, can you take us through the agenda, please? Thank you.
Approve of minutes of the board meetings of November 7, 15, and 22.
Approve the minutes, thank you.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr... Oh, sorry, Mr. Sessa. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
So, the secretary's monthly report for the month of October.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. De Nosa. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Have 2A personnel report.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Nosa. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Pastor Burdo.
Yes.
Abstention with Emma Latens, page 1, 3, and 7. Thank you. Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes, with abstention of page 24.
Trujillo.
Obse.
Munn.
Yes.
Have 3 tuition report.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
3A supplemental tuition report.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
4A request for considerations.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. De Nosa, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
4B use of facilities.
Move 4B waiver fees.
Second.
Moved by Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Nasca. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes, as amended.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Sorry, Mr. Kennedy, I heard my colleague, Mr. Burgos, has amended. Did I miss an amendment?
Munn.
Yes, as amended, thank you.
I didn't vote, Mr. Kennedy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. I just, I heard Mr. Burgos saying as amended and I'm wondering if there was an amendment. But I missed, did I not see even amendment here? I'm not aware of one. Is there a mistake or...
No, Mr. De Silva made a motion to waive all fees.
Okay. Yes, as amended.
Thank you. 4BB use of facilities with fees.
Mr. Kennedy, 4BB waiver fees are number 3 on...
Second.
Moved by Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Trujillo. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes, as amended.
Castilla.
Yes, as amended.
De Silva.
Yes, as amended.
De Nosa.
Yes, as amended.
Gonzalez.
Yes, as amended.
Nasca.
Yes, as amended.
Carrera.
Yes, as amended.
Trujillo.
Yes, as amended.
Munn.
Yes, as amended.
4C request for field trips.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
4CC supplemental field trips.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Nasca. Any comments or questions?
I do, Ms. President, if I may. I'm just curious to know, what is the criteria and the reason for having a 4C and a 4CC? Are we not making deadlines or are these things not getting in on time for some reason? Or just not getting processed?
4C went to the board on Friday and these went out on Monday.
Okay, again, I ask, why is it that we get them in two parts?
Just for that, it's two reports that we received.
Okay, thank you, Ms... Yes.
Pastor Burdo.
Yes.
Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Move the report. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Madam President, members of the board, our guests here tonight and viewers at home. Tonight, I'd like to present the 2011 assessment results. In November, the Board of Education had a special meeting where it presented assessment results in the form of 330 perfect scores. It also recognized the teachers that taught those students, the top 10 performing K-12 schools, top 10 preschools, and our three national blue ribbon schools. Tonight, the Director of Research, Evaluation, and Assessment, Amy Gill, will be presenting the assessment results from preschool through high school. Mrs. Gill?
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Munoz, and members of the community here and at home. It is my pleasure to share with you our 2010-2011 assessment of teaching and learning. Well, this may remind us that all our dreams can come true if we have the courage to pursue them. Here in Elizabeth Public Schools, we have more than a dream, we have a vision. Our vision is that we will be one of the best school systems in America. There are many aspects to being one of the best school systems in America. Tonight, we will focus on the academic component of being one of the best. For us, it begins with reaching 90% proficiency on state assessments. In tonight's presentation, I will share with you our data from pre-K through 12th grade so you can see where we are on our journey to 90%. As we begin with early childhood education, it is important to state that we do not assess our students in pre-K classes. Instead, we assess the environment as a whole and the literacy and mathematics programs that are taught. The Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale, or ECHRS, is the seven-point scale used to evaluate pre-K classroom environments. Since 2005, we have seen 23% growth in our ECHRS scores, from an average overall score of 4.98 to 6.14 last year. The next two assessments are specific to literacy and mathematics and are evaluations of the implementation of our programs. Supports for Early Literacy Assessment, or CILA, is scored on a 5-point scale. Since 2005, we have seen 35% growth and now have an average CILA score of 4.60. The Preschool Classroom Mathematics Inventory, or PCMI, is also scored on a 5-point scale. Since 2005, we have seen 62% growth and now have an average score of 4.48. As we move from pre-K, our assessments change from environmental to student achievement. The Terranova is a norm-referenced assessment administered to students in kindergarten through second grade. From 2005 to 2010, we administered the Terranova second edition. In 2011, we administered the Terranova third edition. A review of our 2005 through 2010 scores on the second edition revealed that we saw 30% increases in reading, 26% increases in language arts, and 23% increases in mathematics at the kindergarten level. And as you can see, our kindergarteners had already reached 90% in mathematics and were in striking distance in reading and language arts. Likewise, we saw growth over five years in grade 1. 22% in reading, 17% in language arts, and 24% in mathematics. Nearly 90% of our first graders were proficient in mathematics, trailed closely by reading and language arts. The growth continued in grade 2. We saw 32% increases in reading, 14% in language arts, and 18% in mathematics. In addition, nearly 90% of our second graders were proficient in language arts in 2010. In 2011, as I mentioned, we replaced the Terranova second edition with the Terranova third edition. The Terranova third edition is more closely aligned to state assessments. Reading and language arts, which you previously saw separated, have been combined in one score under reading. It is important to note that the expectation was that our scores would drop as much as 10% due to the change in the addition of the test administered. In the following slides, you will see how our actual scores compared to that expectation. As you see here, our kindergarteners performed better than expected in reading and mathematics. The yellow is what the expectation was and the blue-gray bar shows how our students actually scored. In grade 1, our students performed as expected in reading and better than expected in mathematics. And in grade 2, our students performed better than expected in both subjects, another indication that we are moving in the direction of being one of the best school systems in America. We are now moving into our state assessments for grades 3 through 8. The New Jersey Assessment of Skills and Knowledge, or the New Jersey ASPS, is the assessment administered by the State of New Jersey to determine proficiency of state standards. The New Jersey ASPS assesses language arts and mathematics in grades 3 through 8 and science in grades 4 and 8. The scoring standards were adjusted in 2008 for grades 5 through 8 and in 2009 for grades 3 and 4. Therefore, you will see that our data goes back to those years for the grade levels mentioned. Since 2009, we've seen 4% growth in grade 3 language arts and 3% growth in mathematics. In grade 4, we have 7% growth in language arts since 2009 and 18% growth in mathematics. 73% of our grade 4 students scored proficient in mathematics. In looking at the grade 5 data, there was an obvious cause for concern, so we looked a little deeper and can report that this drop is a statewide issue. From 2008 to 2009 and from 2009 to 2010, we saw growth in the 5th grade in language arts. We found that across the state of New Jersey, there was growth only from 2008 to 2009, but there has been a statewide drop in proficiency in grade 5 language arts consistently from 2009 through 2011. In grade 6, we have seen significant increases in language arts at 63% and an increase of 26% in mathematics. In grade 7, we have a 19% increase in mathematics since 2008. And in grade 8, a 25% increase in language arts and a 49% increase in mathematics since 2008. When the scoring standards were adjusted in grades 4 and 8 in 2009 and 2008 respectively, no adjustments were made to scoring the science portion of the NJAS. Therefore, the data for science in grades 4 and 8 dates back to 2005. We have seen an increase of 38% in grade 4 and 57% in grade 8. We began to administer the New Jersey Proficiency Assessment of State Standards, or the New Jersey ASPS, to students in grades 9 and 10 in 2008. It is a test created and scored by Riverside Publishing, the company that had the original contract with the State of New Jersey for the high school proficiency assessment, which is a state assessment administered in grade 11. Therefore, the NJAS provides valuable information about grade 9 and grade 10 students regarding their attainment of the state standards. In grade 9, we have seen an 8% increase in proficiency in language arts since 2008 and a 41% increase in mathematics. And in grade 10, 5% in language arts and 31% in mathematics. The High School Proficiency Assessment, or the HESPA, is the state assessment for high school that is administered to students in the 11th grade each March. The HESPA has not had any adjustments to its scoring, so our data dates back to 2005. In language arts, we have seen a 28% increase since 2005 and a 6% increase in mathematics. Unique to the high school is the fact that the state assessment, the HESPA, is not only used for adequate yearly progress or AYP calculations, but it is also used as an exit exam to earn a high school diploma. I mentioned just a few minutes ago that the HESPA is administered to 11th graders in March each year. Because passing the HESPA is also a requirement to earn a high school diploma, students who do not pass are afforded additional opportunities to take and pass the HESPA in October and March of each year following their initial assessment in March of 11th grade. As a result, the New Jersey Department of Education will include the first three administrations of the HESPA in their calculations for AYP. This process is called banking. Here we see the difference from the initial test administration through the third administration. This data is from the 2010 cohort of 11th graders. Those students took the HESPA in March of 2010, October of 2010, and March of 2011. The starting point for the data for AYP calculations is 78% in language arts instead of 68% from their first administration and 61% in mathematics instead of 49% from their first administration. We went back to the 2005 cohort of 11th graders who took the HESPA in March of 2005, October of 2005, and March of 2006 and compared it to the cohort of 11th graders from 2010. With all three administrations included, we were performing 18% better in language arts and 22% better in mathematics from where we were in 2005. As Mr. Munoz mentioned, just a few weeks ago, we had our perfect scores rally, during which time we recognized students who earned perfect scores on state assessments in the spring of 2011. Just as a reminder, in 2005, 12 students earned perfect scores. In 2006, 45 students. In 2007, 23 students. In 2008, 74 students, which at that point was an all-time high until we shattered it the following year with 275 students earning perfect scores in 2009. In 2010, we celebrated 330 perfect scores. And in 2011, 78 perfect scores in grade 3, 88 perfect scores in grade 4, 66 perfect scores in grade 5, 31 perfect scores in grade 6, 19 perfect scores in grade 7, and 48 perfect scores in grade 8. For a grand total of 330 perfect scores, matching that of 2010. That is a 2,650% increase. It's literally off the chart. In addition, on the evening when we recognized the students who earned perfect scores, we also recognized our top 10 performing schools. The data that I shared with you tonight was compiled for each school and the assessments administered to the students were combined and the percentage of proficiency was calculated. For the pre-K K-8 schools, Terranova and New Jersey ASPS were included, and for the high schools, the New Jersey ASPS and the HESPA were used. Coming in at number 10, Ronald Reagan Academy, school number 30. Number 9, Abraham Lincoln, school number 14. Dr. Albert Einstein Academy, school number 29, at number 8. Number 7, Christopher Columbus, school number 15. Number 6, Dr. Orlando Adrera Academy, school number 26. I apologize, I know my pronunciation was not that good. Number 5, Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy, number 5. Victor Maravla, school number 21, number 4. William F. Halloran, school number 22, at number 2. Tied with Terrence C. Riley, school number 7, also at number 2. And your number 1 performing school for 2010-2011 is Elizabeth High School with 99% proficiency. In addition, we also recognized the top pre-K schools. For those, the scores for ECHRS, CILA, and PCMI were all combined and the percentage of possible points earned was calculated. We had a few multiple school ties for places, but I assure you, there are 10 schools honored in this category. Tied at number 8, Pro C2, Elmora, school number 12, and Dr. Antonia Panthohas, school number 27. Tied for number 5, Terrence C. Riley, school number 7, Nicholas Murray Butler, school number 23, and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., school number 52. Standing alone at number 4 is Ronald Reagan Academy, school number 30, and tied for number 2, Frances C. Smith, school number 50, and Donald Stewart, school number 51, where we are at this evening. And your number 1 performing pre-K school for 2010-2011 is Eggnog. In addition, we recognize 3 national blue ribbon schools, and it is my pleasure to remind you that they are from 2006. William F. Halloran, school number 22. Victor Maravla, school number 21, earned this honor in 2008. And as mentioned earlier tonight, earlier this year, Terrence C. Riley, school number 7, earned this honor. So while we are a district with a vision of becoming one of the best school systems in America, we have 3 distinguished schools that have already earned the honor of being among the best schools in America. In closing, I'd like to share with you the words of Vince Lombardi. Leaders are made, they are not born. They are made by hard effort, which is the price which all of us must pay to achieve any goal that is worthwhile. I'd like to thank you for your attention. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Gill. Madam President, that concludes my report for the seat.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Thank you, Ms. Gill. Are there any comments or questions by any of the board members?
I do defer to Mr. Gonzalez. I'd like to congratulate all the staff for doing such a great job and allowing our children to reach social high marks. What a difference from 2005 to now to 2011 for our children in reaching these goals. We can see the pre-K program working as they move through the grades and also the middle school, the high schools. So again, congratulations to the principal, vice principals, teachers, assistants, custodians, because they're all part of the occasion, the security guards, everybody who has allowed our children to shine and keep shining. And we got women next year who'll keep doing better and better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to congratulate our superintendent, Mr. Pablo Munoz. It was under his It was under his tenure here that we are continuing to move forward as a district. He is able to move his agenda forward, his passion for the education of our children. He is able to instill that to his administrators, around him, and to each and every school family. As we saw some of our children perform here today, I couldn't help but notice, I stayed here while the chorus sang, Feliz Navidad, and you could see the joy in Mr. Mikros' face and the other administrators here and teachers and other principals and vice principals. They're just so happy to be around these children. It takes a special person to take the vocation of education, just want to mold these children, work for them, and love them. I know, I could see it in you. I don't experience it, but I could see it. It's evident in your faces and everything you do. And now it's evident in the scores and the way this district is moving forward. Although we have many critics who wish to criticize us simply for their own gain, the numbers do not lie. There is a lot of work to be done in this city of Elizabeth. There has been a lot of gains. And I venture to say that it's done with a lot of love. And these are mostly minority children who, if it wasn't for the taxpayers, the great city of Elizabeth and their sacrifice, and the state of New Jersey's commitment to education, it may not be possible. These things take a lot of resources to do it. That's tax dollars. There are people who criticize the amount of money that it takes, but how much money is enough when you're talking about children's lives and their future? I don't think, if we're able to fight wars across the world to build nations, I think we can invest in our children's future. Every dollar is never too much. We greatly appreciate every dollar that's given and all the investment made. But again, it's all done under the leadership of Mr. Pablo Munoz. And I'd like to congratulate him, and I hope that he keeps up the good work.
If I may, Madam President?
Yes, Commissioner Silva?
First, I'd like to say good evening to everyone here and those of you that are viewing at home. I think it's important that we all acknowledge in what you just saw a couple of minutes ago of the superintendent's report, not just based on the academics, perfect scores, but what's taking place in our district. Many of you know me because between me and Pastor Burgos, we're the two senior board members who've been here since 2002. We saw this district go through leadership change. We were criticized for it. Many times told us that nothing would change. We begged to differ. New board members came on board, and I can say that every board member up here is either a parent of a child who's in our school system or has gone through our school system. And we all put our passion and love into this board, into what needs to be done for this district. And today, you see a little glimpse of the large results that this district has achieved under the leadership of Pablo Munoz and his administration. I think it's commendable. Are we done? Not even close. Have we made significant strides in progress? Absolutely. If you said this in 2004, in 2005 when Pablo came on board and started changing the way this district functioned, many resisted the change. Many said it couldn't be done, and did not want to accept change. Those of you who accepted the change, embraced it, and took on his leadership and said it can be done. Today, you have children over 300 and perfect scores. You have 3 Blue Ribbon Schools, 11 new schools built. Kids are wearing uniforms. And the district is moving forward. If you don't think that's progress and this city's going in the right direction as a school district, then you're not watching closely. Or maybe you just don't have children in the school system and you don't care. For those of us who sit here, for those of you who sit at home and have children, I can see it in the schools. I see it around the neighborhoods. There's a lot of pride. The kids are learning. Parents are starting to get involved again. And you're going to see that Elizabeth, you're starting to see that Elizabeth, its evolution is starting all over again. It's time that more of your parents get involved, watch what your children are doing at home, ask questions, and ask for help. Our staff, the leaders in our schools, the leaders at central administration and help prepare the curriculum for this district are here to help. Here's the changes. It's in here. A lot of people said that our scores would go down. We're outperforming the state, but we're on the right track. Pablo, for you, for our administration, for this board, I congratulate you all, and a job well done. I'm happy to be part of this board, and as long as we keep on this track, I'll try to stay here as long as I can. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, Mr. Munoz, once again, congratulations. Your staff, the teachers, the custodians, the food service workers, everyone has played a key role in making sure that achievements like this happen. But I will disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Trujillo, when he says that he doesn't experience that feeling that he does, that he saw in Mr. Mikros' eyes. You do. I do. We all do. We all should. Because you know what? A lot of the decisions that were made here on the states allow Mr. Munoz the opportunity to really go after achieving what we all worked very hard to, and is that excellent educational experiences for our children. I've had many conversations with Mr. Munoz, and to be where we are compared to where we were in 2005, it requires a total culture change. And that's what we're seeing here. Going from the other regimes to the one that we have now, it's a total shift in how we educate our children. And it requires buy-in, not only from the staff and from Mr. Munoz's teachers and team members, but it also requires a buy-in from the community. And we're on our way. We're working very well, working very hard with the community to buy in to the changes. And it's not only the achievements that we're having in the classrooms, which are fantastic. It's an achievement outside of what happens in the classroom. We have the number-one band in the country. Has that ever happened before here in the history of Elizabeth Public Schools that we've had such an accomplishment by our band? We had our varsity high school football team. Although they gave it their best effort, they made it to the state finals. Our soccer team had a fantastic season. So it's not just achieving excellence in the classroom, it's achieving excellence as a community. And I want to thank you once again, Mr. Munoz, for allowing our children the opportunity to really excel and to be the best they can be. Thank you.
Mr. Munoz, the administrators, the Elizabeth Public Schools. I'm honored to serve on this board. As an educator, I could appreciate even more everything you've done for every single one of our children. My children graduated from the Elizabeth Public Schools. My daughter has the honor of graduating of the first Elizabeth High School Opera Academy, was the first graduate in class. And I'm very happy that I chose to go into public schools. I truly believe that public schools offer the most not only in education, but opportunities for scholarships and gear to give our children the best values. We also have a great community, and we have to respect that community. We need to love everything that we do. And when we sit here, we do it with passion. Each one of us puts 100% of the time to make sure that each one of our children gets the best education that we could give. We have great leaders. We have Mr. Munoz. We have assistant superintendents. We have the teachers, teachers assistants, anybody, everybody. From the kitchen, to the custodians, to the security guards. That's our job. And we're making sure that we give everything to those children. When they go home, we know that we're giving the best to these children, and there's no doubts about it. So I am very honored to sit here and to thank each one of you for your contribution to this system. Thank you.
Well, yes.
Madam President, members of the board, especially Mr. Trujillo and Mr. De Silva, Vice President Nasco, and Mrs. Castillo. Thank you very much. The words are very humbling. I did not expect the presentation to result in so many kind words, but I thank you very much. I think I learned very early in the superintendency that our work here was collective work, was teamwork. And as much as the kind words that you extend are appreciated and very humbling, I think it's important for the community of Elizabeth to understand that the work that gets done in our schools, the direction of our school district, the adoption of vision statements that are bold and courageous all begin with the 9 members of the board. And the board supports us in many ways, through adoptions of policy, through approval of budgets that eventually get actualized in classrooms. But I guess the biggest support that we get from the board is that they allow us to be singularly focused on improving the academic performance of our children. They are strong-minded and willed about becoming one of the best school systems in America. And they empower us to go do that in the classrooms every day with the people that we recruit, we develop, we celebrate. And that's how we get it done collectively. The 9 members of the board and the 4,000 team members that come to work every day to educate the almost 25,000 students that we have in our schools. So I thank you very much. The kind words are kind of like what we used to say on the playground. Rubber bounces off me and goes back to you guys. I guess a lot of the work here is, if not all of it, is really from your leadership and the support we get from you guys. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. Thank you to all the board members. I would just like to add that this is a very passionate board, a very passionate district. We have passionate administrators, passionate teachers, principals, vice principals, custodians, cafeteria workers. Every single person that's on this or in this district is very passionate about what they do, very dedicated, very committed to what we believe, and focused on making sure that these kids are getting, that the children in this community are getting the best education that they deserve to get in the state of New Jersey, in America. And I just have to, for a moment, say that, you know, the motives behind the things that we do are so genuine. And there's nothing else more that we want to see except these children succeed and be able to come back and be successful. Successful taxpayers, successful people, successful in all that they want to do. We just opened the window so they can see ahead. And I just, I hope that that's what we all continue to do. I know there are so many opportunities out there. And I just have to say thank you so much to my colleagues. Thank you so much to the superintendent, the administrators, all of the staff, all of the people from keeping the grounds clean to just tapping the button on the computers. Every single person in this district, they work hard, very hard. Not just the people that you, we always talk about in the top 10 that make every single school and every single principal and staff member dedicate their time to this. And it means so much when we see those accomplishments, when we see results like this that really speak to what we are really about and what we are doing. And most importantly, I have to say thank you to the parents. Because without them, we couldn't do what we do. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say that. Ms. Kennedy, can you take us to the rest of the agenda, please?
Thank you. Pad number 5, Authorization Report.
Move the report, second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments or questions? Seena, roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Burgos, yes. Castilla?
Yes.
De Silva?
Yes.
Denosa?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nasta?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
5A supplemental authorization report.
Move the report, second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments or questions? Seena, roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Burgos, yes. Castilla?
Yes.
De Silva?
Yes.
Denosa?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nasta?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
6 Finance and Accounting Report.
Move the report, second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments or questions? Seena, roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Burgos, yes. Castilla?
Yes.
De Silva?
Yes.
Denosa?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nasta?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Obsteing.
Munn?
Yes.
6A Transfer Funds.
Transfer the funds, second.
Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any comments or questions? Seena, roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Burgos?
Yes.
Castilla?
Yes.
De Silva?
Yes.
Denosa?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nasta?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
7 Award of Contracts Report.
Award of Contracts, second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments or questions? Seena, roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Burgos?
Yes.
Castilla?
Yes.
De Silva?
Yes.
Denosa?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nasta?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
7A supplemental award of contracts.
Award of contracts, second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments or questions? Seena, roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Burgos?
Yes.
Castilla?
Yes.
De Silva?
Yes.
Denosa?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Nasta?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Trujillo?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
7B, second supplemental award of contracts.
Award of contracts, second.
Moved by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments or questions?
I do have a comment, Ms. Munn.
Yes.
I made it in the third page, second down contract with DJF NFIs. I see that we are going to vote on a contract for training for our security staff on violence prevention bullying. I think it's a great idea that we're investing in our security. It's unfortunate that we don't live in a perfect world where our kids and our staff need to be sure that every day they come to work or they come to learn that they're in a secure environment. And that our staff continues to be trained and to continue to retain the best staff possible for our security. We're in tough times, and there are people that don't always have the best intentions. It's important that we continue to train our staff and hire the best.
Thank you.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasta.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Eight communications, Darnan. Nine plaintiffs.
Move plates, second.
Moved by Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Nasco. Any comments or questions? See none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes, with an extension on page five, read De Silva.
Denosa.
Yes, with an extension on page five.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasco.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes, with extension on page nineteen.
Stay.
Munn.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva, can you please read resolution number ten?
Sir, Board of Education Resolution. Whereas, for a moment in history, the voice of one inspired man, Martin Luther King Jr., echoed the dreams of aspirations of millions of people. And whereas, deeply moved by the struggles of oppressed people throughout history, Dr. King courageously dedicated his life to nonviolence and to the tireless pursuit of a more peaceful society. And whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was the driving force behind the historical event known as the March on Washington, and was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for his nonviolent leadership of the civil rights movement in our country. And whereas, Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" keynote address, given on August 28, 1963, to an audience of more than 200,000 civil rights supporters, expressed the hopes of the civil rights movement in a special and heartening speech as moving as any in American history. And whereas, the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in the spring of 1968 tragically cut short the life of one of this country's most outstanding leaders. Whereas, the members of Elizabeth Board of Education recognize the tremendous contributions that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. made during his all-too-short life to promote equality among the people of the United States, and have since dedicated the Martin Luther King Jr. Center for Early Childhood Education, School Number 52, in his honor. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby proclaims January 16, 2012, the day of this year's official observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, as an appropriate date to remember a man whose words and actions awaken in all of us the hope for a more just and more compassionate world. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all principals and media specialists in Elizabeth Public Schools to encourage special programs and activities in recognition of the achievements of this great man. I move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mr. De Silva, second by... See none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes, sir.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasta.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Absolutely, yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva, Commissioner De Silva, can you please read 10A, please?
Yes, Ms. Munn. Board of Education Resolution. Whereas, Ojeda Maria de Ostos, Puerto Rican patriot, lawyer, writer, artist, critic, journalist, biographer, poet, novelist, and short story writer, was born on the west coast of Puerto Rico on January 11, 1839. And whereas, Ojeda Maria de Ostos was educated in San Juan until the age of 13, and then attended law school in Spain. And whereas, at the age of 24, he published the first of his more than 50 writings entitled La Pediglación de... by Ioane? By Ioane. And whereas, Ojeda Maria de Ostos, throughout his life, uses talents as a writer, leader, and educator to work for the independence of the Spanish colonies in the Caribbean and for the creation of the Federated Antillan Republic, composed of Cuba, Haiti, Santo Domingo, and Puerto Rico. And whereas, Ojeda Maria de Ostos formed a League of Puerto Rican Patriots and led the commission that presented President William McKinley with a plan that would allow a Puerto Rican personist to decide whether Puerto Rico should be annexed in many states or become independent. And whereas, along with his work to achieve political change and his success as a writer, Ojeda Maria de Ostos also received widespread recognition for his efforts in other diverse fields such as psychology and law. And he is known as the father of education in the Dominican Republic. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Ojeda Maria de Ostos' passionate idolism and determination to succeed despite repeated failures and setbacks served as an inspiration to all. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to all the district principals and media specialists to promote an awareness of the contributions of this great man. I move this resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Trujillo. Any comments or questions? See none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasta.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Commissioner Pereira, can you read 10B, please?
Show him the one.
Board of Education Resolution. Whereas, Jose Julian Martí, born on January 28, 1853, is widely known as one of the greatest Spanish-American prose writers and poet philosophers. And whereas, through his words, actions, and spirit, Jose Julian Martí eloquently communicated the importance of freedom to the Cuban people. And whereas, Jose Julian Martí, when jailed and exiled for his political writings, found the side of the United States and continued to work diligently to organize other exiles in the quest for Cuban independence. And whereas, so dedicated was Jose Julian Martí to the ideals of liberty and equality for all, that he gave his life for Cuban independence on the Dos Rios battlefield on May 19, 1895. And whereas, our country's historical dedication to the principles of our constitution causes us to respect Jose Julian Martí's determined quest for the freedom of his beloved homeland. And whereas, the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education recognize the tremendous contributions that Jose Julian Martí made to promote freedom for the Cuban people and have since dedicated the Juan Pablo Duarte Jose Julian Martí School, Number 28, in his honor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the courage and patriotism demonstrated by Jose Julian Martí serve as an example to us all. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to all principals and media specialists to encourage classroom lessons and activities in honor of this great man. I move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mr. Trujillo. Any comments or questions?
Ms. Munn, if I may?
Yes.
Jose Julian Martí, in my house, is an icon. Let me tell you why. My father, being a political prisoner, was so inspired by the story of the life of Jose Julian Martí that when the casual regime took over in Cuba and changed his life, he went back to the teachings that he had heard as a child in the schools in Cuba of Jose Julian Martí, and all the sacrifice he had made, is he understood that freedom is a God-given right. And as we hear of people like Jose Julian Martí, and they later on, Martin Luther King, and we are blessed with the presence of these people on earth among us, and they remind us, and they fight for us, and they instill in us a passion for freedom, we must not forget all the sacrifices made on a daily basis so that we are free. We are a free society in this great nation because of the sacrifices of the people in the past, whether they lived here, they did it. Jose Julian Martí did not only see a free Cuba, he wanted to see a free Latin America, Caribbean. He inspired many, many people. I know he inspired my father. And from that passion, I gained my passion for what we do here on the board. And I'm glad that we take the time on a yearly basis to recognize Jose Julian Martí. One of my most memorable moments so far as a member of this board was when we had the honor to open and dedicate Jose Julian Martí, Juan Pablo Duarte Jose Julian Martí School, Number 28, which my son attends down the Elizabeth Board section. To be able to instill that honor in a building in the city of Elizabeth, I could tell you 25 years ago, that would not have been possible. We've come a long way. It's Dr. King wanted us to learn diversity and multiculturalism, and we now have the ability to honor the leaders among us like Dr. Alango Herrera, whose story is incredible, and who has inspired so many among us. Thank you, Ms. Munn.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Pastor Burgos, can you read 10C?
Need the vote on that.
Did you do roll call?
No.
Okay.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasta.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
But application resolution, 10C. Whereas, Juan Pablo Duarte, a courageous man and a patriot, was born on January 26, 1813, in Santo Domingo, Hispaniola. And whereas, after spending six years in Europe to complete his education, Juan Pablo Duarte became determined to free the eastern part of Hispaniola from Haitian domination. And whereas, Juan Pablo Duarte returned to his island, and he and several other patriots organized a secret society called the Intaria to work toward independence. And whereas, Juan Pablo Duarte's first attempt in 1843 to remove the Haitians collapsed when he was forced to flee his country. And whereas, in 1844, his followers succeeded in fulfilling Duarte's dreams, and the Dominican Republic proclaimed its independence. And whereas, Juan Pablo Duarte is often referred to as the father of Dominican independence. And whereas, the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education recognize the tremendous contribution that Juan Pablo Duarte made to promote Dominican independence, and have since dedicated in Juan Pablo Duarte Jose Julian Martí School, Number 28, in his honor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the courage, determination, and patriotism demonstrated by Juan Pablo Duarte in seeking independence for his land certainly remind the people of the United States how privileged we are to be citizens of a free and independent nation. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to all principals and media specialists to encourage students to remember the effort of this brave man. I move this resolution. Second.
Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mr. Trujillo. Any comments or questions? See none. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasta.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Would it be okay if I read this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy. Kennedy, please.
Thank you. Board of Education Resolution, School Board Recognition Month. Whereas, the New Jersey School Boards Association, National School Boards Association, and government officials throughout the United States have proclaimed January to be School Board Recognition Month, an opportunity for all community members to acknowledge the significant contributions made by local school board members. And whereas, the Elizabeth Board of Education is one of more than 600 local school boards in the state of New Jersey that sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas, the Elizabeth Board of Education comprised of President Eri Elmun, Vice President Fernando Nasco, members Taster Raul Burgos, Elsie Castillo, Sime, Armando De Silva, John Denosa, Francisco Gonzalez, Paula N. Pereira, and Carlos N. Trujillo, fully supports the goals of educators to provide quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And whereas, New Jersey's local school boards help determine community goals for the education of 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas, New Jersey's 4,800 local school board members, who receive no remuneration for their services, act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents to foster and enhance public education. And whereas, school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And whereas, boards of education provide accountability to the public, communicate the needs of the school district, and convey to school administrators the public expectations for the schools. And whereas, New Jersey's schools rank among the nation's best in areas such as high school graduation rates, class size, college entrance exam participation, advanced placement offerings, and test scores. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education recognizes and embraces the services of local school board members throughout the state of New Jersey, and joins communities statewide in observing January 2012 as School Board Recognition Month. Be it further resolved to acknowledge and show appreciation for their indispensable contributions of time, effort, and support exhibited by local school board members, that this resolution be spread on the official minutes of the Elizabeth Board of Education.
Move the resolution, second.
Moved by Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Pereira. Any comments or questions?
Yes, Ms. Munn, I have a comment.
Yes.
I would like to congratulate my colleagues, and as the resolution says, we are advocates for the children of the city of Elizabeth. And there we have, we must ensure that the best education possible is delivered time after time. Unfortunately, just being a board member isn't enough. It comes with a lot of sacrifice, often personal attacks for which our families pay dearly, emotionally and sometimes financially. It takes great courage to serve on this board, and I am honored to serve with such a great group of individuals from so many walks of life. We can all come here, we don't often agree on everything, but we do agree that the children deserve the best education, that the city of Elizabeth is a great place to live, and we are better because our children are getting this education. And I know we go through tough times, and every year, I think it's funny because we read this resolution, and then Mr. Kennedy gives us a plaque, and I feel like we're slapping each other on the back. I kind of feel, it feels awkward altogether because we do this with a lot of passion and a lot of love. And you have the love to do this because sometimes it is difficult, especially in the atmosphere. But it's because of the success we see tonight that it validates everything we do. It is well worth it. At the end of the day, when you see all the arrows that the superintendent's report shows, and they're going up, when you see the children here dancing and singing, I often tell people that I come across from different parts of the state, I said, "In Elizabeth, kids are picking up flutes and putting down their guns. No kids are here picking up guns trying to hurt each other. They're learning to play instruments now." I said, "They're not kicking each other, they're kicking balls. They're playing sports, and they're doing a lot of great things, and I'm very proud to be part of this. It's been an incredible ride, and I can't wait to see what's coming down the pike." And for anybody that knows me knows, I'm very passionate about this, and I love it very much, and I couldn't imagine doing it with a greater group than this. Thank you all, congratulate you all for your dedication and hard work to the Elizabeth schoolchildren.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasta.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Absolutely, yes.
Munn.
Yes.
We have the second reading of the Revised Policy Regulation Exhibits for Suicide Awareness and Prevention Programs, file code number 5141.6, and a resolution for adoption.
Move the resolution, second. Second.
Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Trujillo. Any comments or questions? See none, roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Burgos.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Silva.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nasca.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Resolution ten F, requisition for taxes. Move the resolution. Second.
Moved by Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Trujillo. Any comments or questions?
Yes, Ms. Munn.
Yes, Mr. Trujillo.
This is a request for tax dollars owed and collected by the city of Elizabeth. I have to bring to the attention of those that are here and those at home. If you all remember, the school budget was highly politicized and politicized. And although the school board did not raise any additional tax revenue to the taxpayers of the city of Elizabeth, who did not increase the tax levy, there was much to do where City Council decided to sue. And I'm happy to announce that that was resolved in court. Unfortunately, due costly litigation again to the taxpayers, no harm was done by this board.